Good evening and welcome. The August 21st, 2017 Board Commissioners Meeting is now in session. Reverend Joe Griffith has been kind enough to come and give us the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. If you could all rise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. Appreciate always the opportunity to be before you. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the blessings of this day. We come now asking your blessings upon this commission, for we know that they have before them many items of business and from time to time it's certainly things that are significantly important to every member of the county, but we know that the day-to-day affairs require their attention and they're very attentive to it and we thank you, Lord, for their devotion to this county and to the demands that are placed upon them. We pray for all the departments within the county and all the employees as well, that they might feel that this commission has endeavored to do that that is fair and just and looking after the welfare of Curtzack County and all of its citizens. So we pray your blessings upon their meeting tonight. May they enjoy the harmony and the peace that we've seen and the laughter that has been exchanged before the meeting, that they might have this fellowship that only comes, we know, through understanding Christ who gives us peace and certainly gives us salvation and it is in his wonderful name that we give thanks and offer our prayer and amen. Let us offer a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Griffith, thank you.
Thank you.
Be seated. Our first item is approval of the agenda. I do have one adjustment. I would move to remove the Corolla Wild Horse presentation. Linda Atkins could not make it this evening.
Mr. President.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on to our next agenda item, Game Commission informational presentation by Mr. William Brumsey.
All right, thank you guys for having me. I'm Bill Brumsey. I'm the attorney for the Game Commission and I'm going to go through three or four things concerning the Game Commission. I'll first talk about the history of the Game Commission and what we do and what we handle as a commission. Then I'll talk a little bit about the budget and how the budget changes from year to year and what affects the budget and I'll also talk about the duck program that the commission does year to year and is done for the last seven or eight years and then I'll take any questions that you all may have at the end. And as I'm going through this, if you all have any questions as I'm talking through some of these talking points, please let me know and I'll try to get them answered as we're going through as well. All right, the Game Commission was first established back in 1921 under the Act for the Improvement of the Roads and for the Better Protection of Game in Currituck County. So that was ratified by the General Assembly on March 1st of 1921 and the first meeting that we have record of in our minutes for the Game Commission was held on October 21st, 1921. And you'll notice the title of that act has two purposes in there, the improvement of the roads and the better protection of game in Currituck County. So interestingly, and we can look back at the minutes, the excess funds that were generated from the licensing fees were paid over to the Highway Commission in the 1920s. So in 1925, they gave $3,000 to the Highway Commission. In 1926, they gave $9,358.37 to the Highway Commission. And then in 1928, they gave $12,129.32 to the Highway Commission. So some pretty decent numbers for 1920s in Currituck County when you think about it. And there's a lot of interesting stuff in the old minutes. In particular, there's some letters from Joseph P. Knapp that will let you know who Joseph P. Knapp was and what kind of man he was and what he thought about Currituck County and just how far ahead of the times he was when it came to wildlife conservation and some of the ideas that he had and put forward for Currituck County. And I'll touch back on that here in just a little bit. So the modern version of the Game Commission was formed under the Session Laws of 1957, Chapter 1436, and that was ratified by the General Assembly on June 12th, 1957. And Section 1 of that Session Law summarizes the main purposes of the commission and that reads, "The hunting, shooting, killing, or trapping of any wildfowl consisting of geese, ducks, brant, or any other wildfowl from shore, marsh, blind, or floating device on or adjacent to the public waters of Currituck County shall be governed and regulated by the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission and the Game Commission of Currituck County." That gives you kind of the breadth of the Game Commission and what we're doing and what areas that we have jurisdiction over and that's the public waters of the Currituck Sound and those areas that are adjacent to the public waters, specifically the marsh. There's been some amendments over the last 60 years, but that's the basic framework is that 1957 Session Law. One of the changes, of course, was recently, or relatively recently, when the number of commissioners was raised from five to seven to coincide with what the county was doing. So right now, we have seven game commissioners and they are Stephen Lewark in District 1, Jason Belangia in District 2, Jeremy Evans in District 3, Curtis Alston in District 4, Richard Bell in District 5, and then the two at-large members are Robert Rom and James Kason. And Robert Rom and James Kason are the two newest members of the commission who just had their first meeting a couple of weeks ago. The clerk to the Game Commission is Cindy Scott and she's been the clerk for 17 years. She came on in 2001, so she's got a pretty good handle on what goes on with the commission, in particular, the money and budget aspects of the commission. So we have, there's basically two parts to the Game Commission. We have the Session Law, which was again put in effect in 1957, and then under the Session Law, the Game Commission has the power to enact certain rules as it relates to really the awarding of the blinds and managing duck blind applications and such. So when you look at, you say, what are the rules of the Game Commission? It's the Session Law and then the commission rules that have been adopted by the commission pursuant to the Session Law. So two bodies of rules there. And some of the key rules I'll talk about, and if you have any questions about these, let me know, it may spur some. There are three types of blinds that are allowed in Currituck County that we have jurisdiction over and those are stationary bush blinds, float blinds, and point blinds. And with those three types of blinds, there's 895 total licensed blinds in Currituck and that's 351 stationary bush blinds. And those are, if you're out in the sound and you're on your boat and you see a blind out in the middle of the water, that's a stationary bush blind. It's not attached to any real property and it's a licensed location that's been determined to be a good location by the Game Commission over the last 100 years, basically. Float blinds are, again, not attached to any real property and those are movable blinds. So you can have a float blind licensed and hunt anywhere in the Currituck Sound or North River, the public waters of Currituck, so long as you comply with all the rules of the Game Commission, which are basically, don't hunt within 500 yards of another blind location and don't hunt within 300 yards of a residence. Other than that, you can hunt wherever you want to. And then point blinds are blinds that are tied to a piece of real estate. So in order to have a point blind, you either have to own the real estate or have the permission of the landowner to have that blind there, but they are still licensed by the Game Commission and there are rules that apply to those point blinds, just as for stationary bush blinds, in particular, the 500-yard rule, which says you can't have, even the same property owner may own 1,000 acres of marsh, but he cannot have two blinds that are closer than 500 yards, even on his own property. So that's something to remember there and may be a little bit troublesome to some people, but the reason for that is for conservation, safety, and the good of the game. So that 500-yard rule applies to even a large landowner that may want more blinds on his property. Each blind that we have must be applied for each year, so every year you have to renew your application. And the fees for stationary bush blinds are $35 per year for a North Carolina resident, $260 per year for a non-resident. And then all point blind applications, which again are tied to a particular piece of real estate, those are flat 35, resident, non-resident, doesn't matter, because that's tied to the real estate. And as I said, blinds must be 500 yards from other blinds, including on private property. Float blinds cannot tie within 300 yards of a residence. And then the 420 law, which we get a lot of questions about, there is a line that runs from the North Carolina-Virginia line down the intercoastal waterway, then it veers off to the northern tip of Churches Island, runs along Churches Island Road or State Road 1142, Warlilly Road, whatever you want to call it, but State Road 1142 and runs out the Highway 158, then heads south on 158, runs down the center line of Highway 158 to the Wright Memorial Bridge. On the east side of that line, the quitting time for hunting on the sound is 4:20. So you have to be, you have to stop hunting, you can't shoot after 4:20. On the west side of that line, the quitting time is as prescribed by the state or sunset. So that's, there's a line that basically splits the county into the eastern half and the western half and different quitting times for those areas of the county. And then another important rule is that any decision of the Game Commission can be appealed to District Court for a de novo hearing. So the aggrieved party, the person that's not happy with the decision, can appeal any Game Commission decision to District Court for a new hearing. Okay, all right. Any questions about any of the history or rules there that we've gone over?
Actually, go ahead.
I have a question. I notice when you're out on the sound, there are a lot of, they look like they're abandoned blinds, that what's the responsibility of the person who owns it to remove it?
That's a good question. As prescribed by the rules, each year, each blind should be built up to the minimum standards laid out in the Game Commission rules, which is fairly minimal. It has to get some bushing on both sides and poles, doesn't necessarily have to have a shooting box, but you basically have to build a very minimal boat hide. Now, each year, if you don't build it up to the standards, you're subject to have your license revoked for that particular blind. And that is, the Game Commission has basically, it's a complaint-driven system for that. So the Game Commission can do it on its own and revoke a license, but historically has relied on other hunters to complain and say, "Blind 120 has not built his blind up to the standards of the Game Commission. I want it." And then they can request a hearing on that. The Game Commission would make a ruling. From year to year, removal of blind debris is something that the license holder is required to do. And so you'll have blinds that are, of course, were greatly affected by the weather, so someone may have built their blind for the 2016-17 hunting season and now it may look like no one could have ever hunted in that blind in the previous season, whether it be a hurricane or wind-related or ice that we've had problems with in the recent years will be, are very hard on duck blinds. But it is the responsibility of the license holder to clean up any debris that may be in the water as a result of that.
I have a question for you. So it's on the 420. So everything east of that center line, you said it runs pretty much down the sound until you get down to Churches Island. So I'm over on the beach and I back up to the White Trust, I guess.
Right, yeah, White Ayers property.
Yeah, White Ayers property. So I just, it seems like they're hunting a lot.
Yeah.
So, and I could be wrong, I may not just be, you know, the light's getting ready to play out and I'm just not paying attention, so who's in charge of that? Just the game wardens or?
Yeah, exactly. Wildlife Resources Commission enforces these laws. So we administer them, they enforce them. So in that instance, if you, as a neighbor, had a complaint about that, you would call a game warden and that game warden would investigate that. And then any violation of this is a misdemeanor that would be prosecuted in District Court, but it is up to the game wardens to enforce these laws that we're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question, maybe three parts. There is, my understanding, a waiting list for people applying for duck blinds, I guess, if that's still out there or not, I guess, how long is it? And if a blind gets revoked, license gets revoked, or if someone doesn't renew their license, does it automatically go to the next waiting person in line or how does that work?
There is not a waiting list. So each year, certain blinds become available for whatever reason. They didn't, the last applicant didn't apply, the prior year it becomes available the next draw year. Someone may pass away during the year and that blind is going to be open in the next draw. So a prime example would be, there was one float blind on the available list this year and float blinds are highly sought after. So for that one float blind, we had 97 applicants, all right? So anyone can apply for it and the people that were denied that blind are not on a waiting list, they're free to apply for other blinds and no waiting list is maintained. So if they get denied this year for that float blind, if another becomes available next year, they will go into it and they apply, they'll go into another random draw for another float blind next year. But we don't maintain a waiting list for any particular blind. It's just that each blind is open and can be applied for by anyone in a given draw year. And there is a preference for people that do not have blinds. So if I have a blind and I put in for another blind and there's another applicant, my application's going to be pulled because I already have a blind. So, and it doesn't, there's not, there's not a hierarchy of people that get the blinds. Each blind is a new draw each year, with the exception of if I already have a blind, I'm not going to be considered over someone that does not have a blind. So there's a preference for people that do not have blinds already.
Are there criteria to get chosen or is it a blind draw?
It is, you have to be 18, you have to be a licensed hunter, you have to have a North Carolina hunting license. There is, there are some other criteria in the Game Commission rules that allow the Game Commission to deny an applicant if they don't feel like he's a worthy applicant, but in the recent history, there haven't been people that have been denied for other reasons. If they can, if they are 18, they have a valid North Carolina hunting license, then they are going to be in the draw. The rules do allow for the Game Commission to reject an application if the applicant is a consistent violator of game laws or can be denied if the Game Commission were to find that they did not have adequate knowledge of hunting laws or the Currituck Sound or other public waters and therefore would be a danger to themselves or others, it could be denied. But at least since I've been the attorney, which has been 10 years, if we get a good application, we haven't got to that second step where we're denying them for other reasons.
Okay. And what's the difference, the reason for the time separation?
That was done in 1997 and there are various theories as to why that was done like that. The main reasoning that you hear regarding the 420 quitting time is for safety of hunters and conservation reasons. So a lot of, the 420 law came about because a lot of the hunters, in particular, on the beach side, were leaving from the mainland side, going to the beach side to hunt and then having to get back to the mainland side before dark. And so they had that law in for safety reasons. Some argue that that law's outdated now with GPSs and thousand candle power spotlights and things of that nature. So the arguments for that are safety and conservation, allowing the ducks to get back on the marsh prior to sunset.
Got you.
Now, trying to differentiate and say, well, why is it, why are those concerns on the east side and we don't have the same concerns on the west side is?
You don't travel as far.
Yeah, that's the main safety reason, but the, and the other is that most of the marsh or a lot of the marsh is on the backside of the beach and that's where they're going at night is in those marsh ponds there on the backside of the beach.
I have another question. You were talking about a blind becoming available. Say if you owned a blind and you passed away, could you give it to your child?
No, you cannot do that. That is, blinds are not transferable, so I cannot deed a blind to a relative or friend or whatever. So if the blind holder dies during the hunting year, then the heirs of that decedent can use the blind for the remainder of the hunting season, but then the next year, the next draw year, anyone can apply for that blind.
Okay, thank you.
So it's not, I can't, I can't give it to and I can't pass it by will to someone that I wanted to do that for.
Mr. Brumsey, I know the Game Commission meetings, some of them can get very contentious and I just want to applaud you for keeping the peace and, like I said, I've sat in on a couple of them and?
Yeah, they can and that's, these duck blinds are-
This is serious business.
-emotional items for a lot of people and rightly so. So we've had some minor problems, but by and large, it's, things have gone smoothly in the last few years in particular, so.
Well, just thank you for your persistence of keeping the peace.
I appreciate that. And we've got, we've had some good game commissioners too, so they deserve most of the credit on that. All right. I'll make some quick points regarding the budget and then answer any other questions that you might have. Our income is generated by license fees, so depending on the quality of the blind that's available and some other factors, our income can vary by 10, $8,000 to $10,000 in a given year. In 2015-16, we generated income in the amount of $54,325 compared to this most recent year, we generated income in the amount of $44,075. So you can see about a $10,000 difference there and that was based on the blinds that were available and the applicants. And as I said, with a float blind, we had, we had one available this year, I think that prior year we had three. So 97 applicants and most of them applied for all three blinds that were available. So it can fluctuate based on the level of interest in the various blinds that are available. Expenditures are fairly consistent. 2015-16, we spent $41,368. This year, budgeted, we have $52,600. The basic expenses that we go through in a given year are pretty consistent with most of that going towards payment of the clerk, the game commissioners, and then a meager amount goes to game commissioner attorney. But those things are paid through the income. And then we pay the Wildlife Resource Commission $6,400 per year and that's required under the Session Law. So for each blind license that we issue, we have to pay them $11 for a point, $4 for a bush, and $9 for a float blind. And don't quote me on those, but that's, I think that's correct. So we pay them $6,400 per year. This year, expenditures are going up. We've budgeted some more for some of our youth programs that we hope to put in place. Typically, we've spent about $4,000 doing some youth programs. The Ducks Unlimited Green Wing Program usually gets $2,000 and then a youth hunt that is put on in the county usually gets $2,000. This year, we've budgeted $7,000 for that and we're exploring getting some youth hunting educational courses in place and working through that now. We don't have anything concrete in place on that just yet. And we've also budgeted $15,000 on the baby duck program and I'll speak a little bit of that, about that right now. So for the last seven or eight years, the Game Commission has bought baby ducks and supplied those to people within the county that have the ability to manage those ducks and raise those ducks to maturity. We have bought them for the last seven or eight years from frostwater fowl in Georgetown, South Carolina. The cost per duck to get a duck to Currituck is $6 roughly. That fluctuates a little bit based on some transportation costs and other costs associated with the ducks, grain prices, et cetera. So we get those ducks when they're about four weeks old. One of the commissioners is appointed to administer that and gets the ducks distributed out to 12 to 15 people that in the county that are willing to take them, have the ability to manage them, feed them for about four to five weeks until they reach maturity and then have those ducks out in the population. So it's been a good program for the Game Commission and it does give, gives some, some people in the community that feel like the Game Commission generates this money, but they don't do anything good with it. It's a good way for us to give back something to the community and we see some positive effects from it, so it's been well-received. Then the ducks come in at four weeks, the four weeks old, the person that gets them, the entity that gets them then keeps them and they fly when they're about eight to nine weeks old. So there are some, there are some things that have to be in place for that to work. They have to have a facility and have to be able to feed them for those four to five weeks that they're going to be holding on to them. So the Game Commission will get input or get queries from the community. "I want some ducks." "Okay, let's see, let's make sure you can handle it and then apportion them out and prorate them out depending on how much we have, how many ducks we have, the ability to get out into the community." Any questions about anything that we've gone over? All right, the next Game Commission meeting is September 6th at 7 o'clock. It's in Courtroom C at the new courthouse. So you come on out and see what goes on there. That's the appeals meeting. That's where we handle any, any people that are not happy with the initial decision of the commission that was made at the draw meeting, which was earlier this month. And the website, Currituck County Game Commission website, I encourage you to go there and you have, the Session Law is there, the rules are there, and you can also look at a map of all the blinds in Currituck County to see where they're, all the stationary bush blinds in Currituck County to see how they're spread out over the county and where they're concentrated. So- Any questions about anything that we've gone over? Alright, the next game commission meeting is September the sixth at seven o'clock. It's in courtroom C at the new courthouse. So you come on out and see what goes on there. That's the appeals meeting. That's where we handle any, any people that are not happy with the initial decision of the commission that was made at the draw meeting, which was earlier this month. And the website, Currituck County Game Commission website, I encourage you to go there, and you have, the session law is there, the rules are there, and you can also look at a map of all the blinds in Currituck County to see where they're, all the stationary bush blinds in Currituck County, to see how they're spread out over the county and where they're concentrated. So the website is currituckgamecommission.com, and it's a good source of information for the game commission. Alright, any questions?
I do not. Mr. Brumsey, thank you for the light of presentation, and thanks for taking care of...
Yep, we appreciate it. And if I can answer any questions anytime, feel free to give me a call or shoot me an email, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Thanks for taking care of such a vital part of our heritage. We appreciate it. Moving on, I didn't have anyone signed up for public comments. Would anyone like to speak to that? I apologize for that. Hearing none, we'll move on to public hearing in action. PB sixteen fifteen dash twenty-six, Currituck County, request for a use permit to expand the existing Panther Landing Convenience Center located on Panther Landing Road in Moyoc, Tax Map fourteen, parcel thirteen B, Moyoc Township. And with that, I would swear in, Mr. LaCicero.
Mr. Chairman, I think actually, this is the county's application for a use permit. The county is intending to request at this point in time for a continuance of that hearing until September eighteenth, for the reason that the county's appraiser, which is essential to this board making an evidentiary finding regarding issues for this use permit, our appraiser cannot be present tonight, but can be available to testify on September eighteenth. So it'd be appropriate, if the board is inclined to grant the county's request for a continuance, to at this time entertain a motion to continue this matter for public hearing on September eighteenth.
I'll make a motion that we continue this to September eighteenth.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on to new business. Resolution authorizing the upset bid process for the sale of county-owned property located on Bell's Island Road, parcel ID number zero zero five nine zero 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 three A zero 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 zero. With that, we hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Mr. Chairman, the county happens to own a seven-point-five-five acre piece of marshland along Bell's Island Road here in Currituck. There are various ways in which a county may dispose of property that it doesn't have really any use for, and to put it back onto the tax rolls. And one of those ways is if we receive offers to purchase property, we then may accept that offer, but contingent upon an upset bid process occurring thereafter. This has been a usual way in which the county has disposed of various pieces of property similar to this one. We have received, the county has received a, an offer from Hunter Stewart to acquire this particular piece of property, as it is adjacent to land that he and his family already own. He's offered to pay five hundred dollars. The staff is recommending that the board initially accept his offer of five hundred dollars, contingent upon an upset bid process, the details of which are set forth in a resolution that the board would adopt tonight if you see fit. It will require a public advertisement of this upset bid opportunity for any other persons who have an interest in this property to submit their bids to the county for consideration. If another bid is received, then another advertisement will take place, and that will continue on until there are no further bids. If there is no bid received, other than Mr. Stewart's offer, then the resolution would provide that the county staff is authorized to accept Mr. Stewart's offer for this property in the amount of five hundred dollars, and allows for county staff then to execute the appropriate documents transferring the land to him. The staff recommends this resolution for disposal of this property to the board.
With that, open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the resolution authorizing the upset bid process for the sale of the county-owned property located in Bell's Island Road, parcel ID zero zero five nine zero 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 three A zero 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 zero.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on, board appointments. Clerk to court Ray Matusko has written a letter requesting us to reappoint Vivian Simpson to the jury board.
I move for approval.
Any discussion?
I just want to make a comment. Vivian Simpson is an outstanding person. She serves well, she is very active in the community, so this is just a reiteration of a great decision to reappoint her.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Consent agenda?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on to commissioners' report. Commissioner Beaumont?
Uh, nothing this evening.
Commissioner Rethridge?
Nothing, Chairman.
Commissioner Payman?
Nothing this evening.
Commissioner White?
Man, it's quiet in here tonight. Guess I'll stick with the trend.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gilbert?
Well, I'm gonna. Just kidding, just kidding. I'm just kidding. Why would I start now?
A nickel back.
Why would I start now?
Um, just, and I don't have a comment, but I'm going to make a request of the county manager to, during his report, if you would be so kind as to summarize, I've received several phone calls relative to the FAA program at reducing the potential hazard to aviation at our parks, so for the purpose of folks that are viewing this out there, if we could get the real story out there.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Beaumont.
But that's not a comment.
Thank you for that. Moving on to county manager's report.
Yes, sir, I'd like to report on. The county does participate, there is a, it's an FAA program that's housed actually in the US Department of Agriculture. It's for wildlife management over airport properties. There's a program for deer, and certainly one for birds. We've actually been participating for years in this program. We have actually tried several different mechanisms to try to discourage the goose population from hanging out and roosting around the airport, and we've not been successful with any of the efforts we have done. We have tried in the past, we were told that grape juice, grape flavor on the grass would discourage the birds from roosting there, and so we have acquired grape, and we sprayed it all over the grass. That was not successful. We were told that garlic would cause the goose population to leave, and so we sprayed garlic. The garlic was not successful. These were recommendations that we got actually from PETA. We bought a cannon. We were told that noise and being disruptive would discourage them, and so we had every fifteen minutes, we were shooting a cannon off. The flock certainly would dissipate and return some fifteen, twenty minutes later to remain roosting. We have tried a dog, had a dog that just continued to harass the population. So we've tried various different mechanisms, trying to discourage year after year the population from nesting at the airports, and we have not been successful in anything we've done. So we did several years ago sign up for, and we do participate in an FAA program where they will come in on their schedule. We, our airport is listed, and so they do come in on a schedule, and they will address the population. They do euthanize them and dispose of them. It is unfortunate, this time of year was, we got on the FAA schedule just, you know, a month or so to the hunting season open, so I think some of the hunters, they certainly have reached out to me, and have been upset about the timing of it. There is a couple of the hunters that I've been talking about, that perhaps we can look at, or they, through the volunteers, they can get some boxes, nesting boxes, and maybe there's some other efforts we can do out and around the airport to try to relocate, and I'm willing to engage with the hunting population in any way that we can to relocate the population, so that we ultimately would like to not participate in this program. But bird and aviation don't mix. It is a hazard to airplanes that are both taking off and landing. This time of the year, going into fall, it is a significant problem at airports. As temperatures start to slowly drop, the flock tends to go out and stand on the runway. Not only is it the radiant heat or what it is, but it does draw them to the runway, and they stand on the runway, to the point that some of the times, sometimes the staff has to take a vehicle and run it down to keep them up. But the bottom line is, you know, the birds and the aircraft don't mix, and unfortunately, we had to resort to a federal program where they do come in and thin or eradicate the flock. But again, I've talked to some of the hunters, and they've proffered some ideas, and maybe some additional things that we can try, so that going into the future, we won't, hopefully we'll be able to remove ourselves from the federal program.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. With that, I'll recess the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners and enter into the special meeting of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District Board. First agenda item would be a bid award recommendation for Phase Two construction project Ocean Sands Wastewater Treatment Plant, Corolla.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have been talking for a while now through the budget process about the need to continue the effort to replace the Ocean Sands Wastewater Treatment Plant. At your last meeting, we brought together and got approval from the board to submit a financing, or intent to finance, a capital project, which the board, we appreciate, approved. Since then, we have gone out for bids for this project. We did receive three. In your agenda package, we have the letter from the engineer of record outlining those three bids. We did have something that I actually have never had to work through with bids before, and so we did have an anomaly that I would like to explain to the board, because I will like to ask that you include this in your motion, is that one of the bidders was so far under all the other bids and what the engineer's estimate was, that it caused obviously them grave concern. And they went back to review their bid and found out that they had made a significant error in adding up their pieces of the bid, to the extent they were about one-point-seven million dollars less than where the bids were coming in. The general statutes do allow, under these specific criteria, that when a gross mathematical error was made, the low bidder can make an appeal to the county and submit a request to withdraw the bid. The engineer of record, and I think our county engineer met on Friday to review the information, and they feel very comfortable that it was in fact a mathematical error. So we are asking the board tonight to accept their offer to withdraw a bid, that was TA Loving. The other two bids came in, were closer together in bid, and closer to what the engineer's takeoff. So moving to the next lowest bidder, it's Hatchell Concrete. And so tonight, our staff is asking the board to, number one, accept the withdrawal of bid from TA Loving, and to enter into a contract, or authorize the county manager to enter into a contract with Hatchell Concrete for the Phase Two expansion of the Ocean Sands Wastewater Plant in the amount of seven million two hundred and ninety-nine thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars. This is the Phase Two. Hatchell was actually the low bidder on Phase One, so we do have experience with them, and we're comfortable making the request, and we ask the board to support it, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
With that, I'll open the floor for a motion to remove TA Loving's bid.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the acceptance of the TA Loving withdrawal, and to accept Hatchell Concrete awarding the bid for seven million two hundred and ninety-nine thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on to the next gen item, public hearing in action, financing and contract authorization for Phase Two construction of the Ocean Sands Wastewater Treatment Plant, Corolla.
Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the board authorized us to submit an application to request funding, a bank loan up to eight million dollars. We put this project out for bids also with financial institutions to see who would be interested in funding this project. We did receive two bids back in. It is our recommendation to move forward with BB and T, who proposed to finance at the eight million at two-point-five, four-five percent. The second, the other bidder was at two-point-nine-eight percent. We're also, because the bid came in at seven-point-two, we will be moving forward with LGC with a bid request of borrowing seven-point-five million, so we can come in half a million less than what authorization was, and so we're recommending that we move forward with BB and T at a loan rate of two-point-four-five percent. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Scanlon? With that, I'll open the public hearing. I currently do have anyone signed up for the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this matter? With that, I will close the public hearing and open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we move forward with the financing contract authorized for Phase One with financing through BB and T at two-point-five percent for the seven million five hundred dollars requested, five hundred thousand dollars.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. With that, I will call for a motion to close the special meeting of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District Board. Second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. With that, I will move into closed session, and that will be closed session pursuant to GS one forty-three dash three-one-eight point eleven A three, to consult with the county attorney and to preserve the county client privilege regarding the matters captioned RF London Inc. versus Currituck County and Latandra versus Currituck County.
Mr. Chairman, we actually, we need a motion.
Motion to go in closed session.
Second to vote on that, please.
Apologies. Motion? I was doing so well.
Mary.
A motion to go into closed session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. I was doing so well.